He lays a John Guahan is called to order. That's office day. Good morning, senators. I'm going to ask if we can please rise and Senator Underwood will lead us in prayer.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Father Almighty, we come before you grateful, Lord, for the continued protection over our island, for the continued provision, Lord of finances and food on our table, Lord, and just all the blessings of good health. We come to you grateful for this beautiful day. We come to you grateful that, Lord, you have peace over our island. So with gratitude in our hearts for the families and friends and even our adversaries, Lord, who keep us sharpened, we ask you to please just guide this body that you have appointed to make very important decisions on behalf of your people here in Guam. We ask you to infill us with your wisdom, with your knowledge, your understanding. We ask you, Lord, to give us peace. We ask for a healing, Lord, where there is injury. And we ask you most of all, Lord, to have us experience once again, over and over again, your unconditional love for each and every one of us, Lord. And we are indeed grateful, Lord Jesus, for going on the cross for us so that we might have eternal life. And so with this, Lord, we lift up our session to you, we lift up the governor of Guam to you, the judiciary, Lord, Chief Justice Robert Torres. We lift up to you, Lord, Speaker Juan Pat, and all of the government of Guam workers, that we would do the best that we can on behalf of your people. And we pray oh this, Lord, in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of Inefresi, Senator Torres, would you lead us? Thank you, Senator. And for the singing of the Guam hymn, can Senator Morrison lead us? And for the singing of the national anthem, Senator Tom Ada, if you can lead us.
Oh say can you see, by the daughter he lies, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last peak, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous spire, for the ramparts we watched were so gallantly strewn, and the rockets red glare'd the bombs bursting in air, gay through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, senators. Can clerk please take roll call?
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Espada. Senator Creedy. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Sinikus. Senator Torres. Senator Underwood. Speaker Juan Pat. Madam Speaker, there is a call.
Thank you very much. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized for motions.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to excuse any member not yet present for session.
On that motion, no objections ordered.
And I move that we approve the legislative journal, both September 12, 2016, and November 21, 2016, both subject to corrections.
On the motion, no objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be penned at a session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as reports from Magallay in Guam, I move for the same.
No objections, so ordered.
And I also move that reports of standing committees also be appended to a session journal.
There being no objections ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees at this time. So on item 12, under one motion, I move that bill numbers 371-33COR through 402-33COR, resolution numbers 453-33LS through 556-33LS, resolution numbers 457-33COR to 510-33COR, certificate numbers 184-33LS, certificate numbers 185-33COR to 196-33COR all be given its first reading.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions and legislative certificates introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted, to have the sponsors work with the clerk and to allow the legal counsel to make technical corrections and to add all other senators as co-sponsors.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
And my other motion is our customary motion that we allow the speaker to reorder the second reading file on the basis of that that bill may be pending a committee report or that sponsor may need additional time or that additional time may be needed to seek answers that senators are asking of that particular bill so that the motion is to allow the speaker to reorder the second reading file for purposes of efficiency and to get through this very extensive session agenda.
Thank you. On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
My next motion, Madam Speaker, at the request of Senator Bran McCready, I move that we reconsider the actions of the body on the failed bill 201-33, and it's an act to amend Section 1 of Public Law 32208 relative to excluding senators of Villa Sertu in Guam from the Competitive Wage Act of 2014 and to add a new Section 1106.1 to Chapter 1, Title II of the Guam Quote Annotator relative to reducing the compensation of senators of Villa Sertu in Guam, and that this motion is to reconsider the action and that to place this bill in the second reading file in numerical order.
On that motion, Senator Sinikus.
Madam Speaker, this this motion is actually quite a surprise. I would like to perhaps request a recess to discuss.
Okay, we'll take a brief recess. The legislature is back in session. Senator, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the motion, just to be clear, this motion is to resurrect the vote on just cutting senatorial salaries as opposed to repealing all of 32208. And this issue was a very contentious and center point issue throughout the campaign season of this most recent election. And the proponents and opponents of those who wanted 32208 to be repealed and those who wanted it to remain and and those who wanted to just target senatorial salaries and make it comprehensive and whatnot, I mean, we've had a tremendous amount of discussion and dialogue regarding this this approach. And the bottom line is that I really believe that the electorate has spoken with the results in this most recent election with regards to what they want us to do. And I don't think that the 33rd Guam Legislature should address something that the electorate has already charged the 34th Guam Legislature to address. And so I would like to object to us resurrecting this piecemeal approach and allow for the 34th Guam Legislature to repeal Public Law 32208.
On the motion, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? There is an objection. Oh, I'm sorry, Senator. Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I am in support of the motion to to address the bill that would repeal the pay raises of just the senators. I know we've gone through this with this body numerous times. I have even attempted to try to do a voluntary individual senatorial reduction, and that failed. But, you know, Madam Speaker, I want to give this another shot because there were reasons, various reasons by which members of this body did not vote for the bill. And among those was that when we addressed the other bills, it included members of this government that pretty much did not have control over their salaries, primarily the mayors. And it was felt strongly at that time that they shouldn't be included. And so I know that we had tried to address this, but it is my fundamental belief that if we were to be accountable and to hold the government accountable for every penny and to be responsible, it should start with each one of us, Madam Speaker. And so it should start with this body. And so this is why I am in support of this. I would like to be able to state one more time and give it another shot for for the reduction to start with this body. The 34th Guam Legislature can then add on other other branches of government if they wish to do some reduction in pay and salary, but, you know, it has to start with us. And so I am in support of addressing this bill again, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Respecho, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also rise in support of the motion to reconsider Bill 201. Here we go again. Here we go again, playing the the one up against each other, and look who's opposing the amendment. The poser of the amendment knows that quite possibly there could be eight votes to pass this bill. The governor has gone on record saying that if senators want to cut their salary, who is he to get in the way? I've consistently voted to cut senatorial salaries in this body. I voted for Bill 201. My first term in this legislature, we took an $1,100 a month cut for nine months because all the classified employees were going to go down to a 32-hour work week. When we were faced with the two options of rolling everything back versus rolling just our salaries back, at the time, we all know that positions on this issue evolved, but we know that given the landscape of this current legislative body, we know that the most that we can get for rolling back all the other salaries is nine votes. We've tried that several times. This body, it didn't move to reconsider that override attempt, and it was failed twice. Here we have an opportunity. And, you know, I take great offense to say the people have spoken and that mandate is charged for the 34th Guam Legislature. I'm still a member of this 33rd Guam Legislature, and we're all members of this 33rd Guam Legislature until this legislature adjourns to die. And we all know that this is a very contentious issue. We all know that that if we have the votes now to take this issue off the table, I think we're going to be doing a great service to those who have been elected to be members of the 34th Guam Legislature so we remove this issue from the table. Why do we want to wait till the 34th Guam Legislature and leave it to them to do it? Is it because it's possible there might not be eight votes to do it? Is it possible that the governor might veto it? There might not be 10 votes to do it? We have an opportunity to do this now, Madam Speaker and colleagues, and I want that opportunity to go on the record once again and say that I consistently voted to roll senatorial salaries back. I want that opportunity for myself. I want that opportunity for our other colleagues here. And I want the record to reflect who is in opposition of this amendment to roll the senatorial salaries back. I want the record to reflect who again is the one that's defending to keep the senatorial salaries at the level that it is today. And so I implore all of us to really think how important it is to reconsider this motion, to support this motion, to reconsider Bill 201, so we have that opportunity to remove what's been very divisive and that we we recognize that this is what the community wants us to do as well, and the election results are reflective of that. So I I rise in support of the motion to reconsider.
On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to stand and rise in support of giving this bill consideration. As I share the same sentiments as the previous speaker, I too want to be given an opportunity to say to the public that my commitment on making sure that our 24/7 responders, which is the mayors of Guam, have them retain their their pay raises based on the Competitive Wage Act and the inclusion of making sure that the mayors get their just pay. I've always supported that. And I always said, since the 27th Guam Legislature, when we literally had to to buckle our belts and and be conservative and try to reduce the deficit and and make tough decisions beforehand, we committed as a body that that we cut our pay. If everybody else in the government was going to take a pay cut, that we would do the same. And Madam Speaker, I just want to say publicly for the record that I have no problems cutting my legislative pay as it relates to parity across this august body. And I want to make sure that I be given that same consideration and to share to the island of Guam that that I have been very consistent from day one about looking at where our finances are, and if they think that $300,000 is going to help, then let's give it. But I will not take away from what the mayors and the vice mayors rightfully deserve, which is due to them, because they truly are the representatives of each of the village residents within their village. So again, I stand firm on that, and if this measure comes to the floor, it will give I will give it my favorable vote on the matter. Sign him on seat.
Here will come Senator. On the motion, Senator Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, several times at several forums, I've mentioned if to to our community, those were in attendance, and even publicly stated, I've even wrote to several media mediums to try to help help bring much awareness or education to our community in how things have occurred throughout the years regarding this issue. Madam Speaker, I mentioned that if people really followed the one of our most important tasks, and that is to balance this budget, balance the annual budget, they would understand or they will find out just based on on our voting records that this body is not really divided on this issue. And that is the truth based on our records, Madam Speaker. And I mentioned several times that the best way to deal with this comprehensively is through one of our most important tasks is the budget process. One thing that was mentioned too is, and it was several commitments by some of my colleagues, so let's try to address it in our in the budget process. But obviously, the Competitive Wage Act in three budget cycles was never contended with, and it stayed in, and we all voted on it. Madam Speaker, the numbers contained in the budget are attached to staffing patterns which reflect the Competitive Wage Act. Let me say that again, so our public can hear that. The numbers attached in the budget are attached to staffing patterns that reflect the Competitive Wage Act. And based on the voting record of every colleague here, at one point or another, has supported these budgets that we've all trumped as balanced budgets. I voted against the objections of the administration as well, knowing full well that these were considered to be conservative budgets, most recently the FY 2017 cutting over $55 to $60 million, still incorporating the Competitive Wage Act. So Madam Speaker, in the spirit of being open to our public and what has occurred throughout these budget cycles and how we voted on these budgets, look at the voting record, this body is not divided. It's through separate piecemeal legislations or legislation that has costs, this division that has contradicted our positions on the budgets. It doesn't make sense, Madam Speaker, when we we start on the budget call in January, spend months deliberating on these budgets, meeting with every agencies, and not once the Competitive Wage Act's brought up, through every agency, and to still incorporate it, and we all collectively voted on it. Just recently, the FY 2016 and FY 2017 budget, Madam Speaker, was practically unanimous. So I've mentioned many times at forums, even on D16, and I've done it in the most diplomatic way to help our people understand that this body is not divided on this issue, just by virtue of our votes on the budgets, the recent budgets. virtue of our votes on the budgets, the recent budgets. It is our most fundamental, most basic, most important task. And those numbers are supposed to stand throughout the fiscal year, and to otherwise, and something's more compelling that we have to go back into the budget and make necessary revisions. Madam Speaker, our vote for Bill 201, or Boo 204, or any measure that comes up, Madam Speaker, contradicts all our positions on the budget, the recent budgets. All of the points we've made, that this is the most conservative, it's the right direction measure of bill, everything is all washed down the drain, just by virtue of our votes on these new measures coming up. My goal here, Madam Speaker, is to help our public understand the budget process, to help our people follow the budget process. If they follow us, as extensive, I know this process is very extensive, if they follow us, you'll find that we're not divided on this issue. So once again, Madam Speaker, I'm not sure if this is an attempt just to end the politicization of this issue, and not really be forward with our people, with how we all have addressed very responsibly, at least I can say with the budget, at least with the most recent FY 2016 and 2017 budget. Our people need to understand, Madam Speaker, that we voted for the Competitive Wage Act. Collectively, this body has supported the Competitive Wage Act on several budget cycles. The only thing we have to prove for that is our votes, Madam Speaker. And that's the last straw we have on where we stand on any measure. So we can go ahead and address this measure, pull it out, and it contradicts every single budget, at least that I've been in these terms since 2014, on a, that we've contradicted every single budget with regards to the Competitive Wage Act. Competitive Wage Act was built in every single budget, it was not contested, and we voted on it. We voted on every budget. Madam Speaker, the numbers contained in the budget reflect staffing patterns that reflect the Competitive Wage Act, unless somebody can correct me that those numbers don't reflect the Competitive Wage Act, because right now, they're all being implemented. The senators were also included in the Competitive Wage Act in the recent budgets, and we voted on it collectively. I'm not sure what we're doing here, but we're dividing the community because we're contradicting our positions on the budget. No sense starting this budget process. I've mentioned many times, and you guys heard me, what are we going to do about a Competitive Wage Act as specific to the budget process? Can we address it in the budget so that we don't go down this road of contradicting our positions with legislation a month, or two, or three, right after we just voted unanimously, practically unanimously, on a budget that we all agreed with, and then contradicted a month, two months later? The most important task of this legislature, Madam Speaker, and we keep contradicting that At least I could say I have not contradicted my position. I fully well knew what I was voting on, on these budgets, I knew what was in them, and I voted my conscience. So Madam Speaker, let's be straightforward with our people, that this body is not divided on this issue. Specific to our voting records contain, or specific to the budget cycles, or the budgets, at least with the FY 2016 and FY 2017, every member of this body has voted for the Competitive And I understand this was a very sensitive issue throughout this term and throughout this campaign, but let's educate our people about the budget process, our most important task. I keep repeating that. I'm trying my best to educate our people. If you followed us throughout this budget process, as extensive as it is, you will find out that we are not divided. You will find out that we all support the Competitive Wage Act. You will find out that we all voted for it.
Point of personal privilege, Madam Speaker, that is, and has been for the last five minutes, an inconsistent and incorrect statement. And if I need to elaborate further, I would, but I'd just like to, for the record, rise to point of personal privilege and state that that is actually incorrect. And if the member can avoid speaking on behalf of what it is that I support.
So note it, okay? Senator, will you stick to the issue of the bill?
Yes, I am, because it is, because it is contained in the budgets. And I did bring it up many times to several of my colleagues in the committee of finance to ensure that the Competitive Wage Act is, are we going to address it throughout the budget process? But Madam Speaker, again, I'm just trying to point out that if my colleagues can prove me otherwise, that the Competitive Wage Act wasn't embedded into these budgets, and by our virtue of voting for these budgets, that we did not support it, that we didn't support Competitive Wage Act, then let's be clear about that, because I'm not sure what road we're going down in the future with regards to the Competitive Wage Act in future budgets. That's all I'm trying to say here. I'm trying to ensure that our people have a clear understanding, are we addressing also the Competitive Wage Act, that has been a highly contentious issue through every budget, through every term, so to ensure that our people in the future, even through the 34th, 35th going on, that this is an issue that's always going to be addressed, or voted on as well, throughout the budget process, not separate from the budget.
And the vice-speaker's going to speak next, so I'm sure he's going to elaborate more on that issue. So thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, it is correct that the Budget Office passes or proposes a budget that includes all the staffing patterns that are submitted to us. If and when this legislature decides that it's going to reduce its salary and submit to the Office of Finance and Budget a staffing pattern with a reduced budget, the Budget Office will reduce it. The Budget Office does not have the authority to cut the senatorial salaries, which are set by statute. If and when this legislature decides it wants to reduce the salaries of the all-elected officials, it can. When it does, the Budget Office will make that budget reflect that in the budget that is proposed. But the Budget Office does not change statute. We only try to meet whatever is necessary. After we pay off our bills, we try to cover all of the warm bodies, and then if we have any money left over, then we do the basketball fields and roads. But we do it after we cover salaries. So that's what the budget reflects. If and when this legislature passes this, and it reduces it, you'll be sure to see it in the next budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak? Senator McCready?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is pinpointing a problem, that's all it is. This has nothing to do with procedure. Actually, it has something to do with procedure, but the end income has really nothing to do with procedure. This is what we have been trying to do for the last three and a half years, and I'm not going to sit here and try and pat myself on the back and say, yeah, I've been trying to do this for three, four years. But we know, we know who's been trying to do this. The people in this body know. It's taken that long, hopefully, to see the fact that we need to put this problem behind us. And I wasn't here for all the testimony in the beginning, but I think the next legislature needs to think and focus on bigger and better things for this government. We have an obligation to the people of this island to follow through on promises we have made during the campaign, whether it was this year, or the year before, or the year before that. We always make promises, and then sometimes, we don't live up to those promises. You're either for this, or you're against it. That's really the bottom line. This isn't something new. This isn't a surprise. This is a piece of legislation that has been vetted six or seven times, has been introduced through legislation three or four times, has been introduced and proffered through amendments three or four times, to total maybe six or seven. I have lost count. But the question is, what are we going to do about it? Are we going to chase our tail and continue to promise and continue to run around, hope for a veto, comeback, no 10 votes? I mean, it's easy to vote on something when you know that it's never going to get passed, or it's never going to get signed, or it's never going to get that 10th vote. It's easy to vote, yes, I'm for it, because you know in the back of your mind, you're smart enough to know that this will never be implemented, but it looks good on paper that you voted yes for it. And we all know, maybe some of the people watching don't know what I'm talking about, but everybody in this room knows what I'm talking about. That is how this legislature works, and not just this one, I'm sure previous ones work too. Strategic voting. Vote for your numbers to go up. So if we allow our moral compass to get involved, then this is the right thing to do. But if we allow the fact that we had promised one thing, and then decided to break that promise, because we have another two years of kicking that can down the road, building more tunnels when the light's at the end of the first tunnel, then we can do that. But to pass it on to someone else, that's not making tough decisions, that's taking the easy way out. And when you talk about the mayors, the mayors had a public hearing. The Hays study had a public hearing. The senators were not inclusive of the Hays study. The senators did not have a public hearing. The senators decided to put that pay raise into the Hays study and delink them from the judges. The senators did that. It is up to the Senate to undo it and to make it right. And you can go back three and a half years and look at all my testimony in this room, and it's pretty much exactly the same as it is today. I've been very consistent on this one issue. Myself and Senator Mike Limtiaka was the first ones to introduce Bill 3032 to decrease the pay of the Senate, three or four months in. And we took a shellacking from this, from my own party. We took a shellacking. I think him and I were the only ones that agreed. So Madam Speaker, I hope, I hope that we can all come to an agreement here today, and I guess we're voting, if I may, you had a question, are we voting now on the acceptance of?
On the motion.
On the acceptance of the motion.
Senator, are you relinquishing the chair? You're done? Okay. Thank you. I wasn't too sure, because you were still standing. On the motion, is anyone else who would like to speak on the motion? There being none, so there is, there are objections. Senator? Yes, please, you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, I was caught by surprise by this motion myself, and we've heard the previous speakers, those for this motion, for this bill to be resurrected and put before us, and those who stand against it, for whatever reasons. The last speaker, the previous speaker, made several points that I'm not sure I necessarily agree with, or at least it's perhaps in my mind, a half-truth in the presentation of the information that he provided. But one of the things I do want to address at this point is, he made a very succinct statement, you're either for it, or you're against it. And of course, that's true. You're going to either vote yes, or you're either going to vote no. The missing link in that whole thought, though, is that we all have a difference, or we all have our own reasons for why we would vote for it, or why we would vote against it. Not everybody who votes a certain way, who are grievous in a vote, whether it's for it or against it, are voting it for the same reasons, or voting against it for the same reasons. And so I want to make sure that we don't corner ourselves into such a simplistic approach in saying that's the way the world works, because that is not the way the world works. Even here in the legislature, that is not the way the world works. One man's perspective may be totally contrary to another person's perspective within this Yes, when, there were a couple speakers who mentioned the mayors, and yes, they are very hardworking, and yes, their whole pay issue in the Hays study was heard at a public hearing. However, nobody seems to want to address the fact that the pay that was addressed and that was proposed in the Hays study was much lower than what was given to them ultimately. The same thing, if you want to take a look at the executive branch, the same thing there. The proposed rate that was given is definitely higher than the proposed rate that the Hays study put in, recommended. If we take a look at the mayors, mayors now are making 70-some thousand, right? In the Hays study, I believe it was 60. So I guess in my mind, the point I'm trying to get to is that this particular bill, moving back on the floor, brings the senators back down to 55. But I'm not really sure why we're making ourselves the martyrs, when really there will be an inconsistency, there will be an equity in terms of the roles that we all play in comparison to others. And so I guess my frustration at this point was, one, that, well, I guess I shouldn't be surprised, but I was surprised by this motion. Second, is that now we're still talking about the same things that we've talked about all year long. We have 30-something bills on this agenda for this session, and we're going to work through, from now, go through Thanksgiving, and then go through next week, and then, I understand, Madam Speaker, we have another session before the end of this term. I, at this point, voice my opposition to the resurrection of this bill. I believe that the next legislature, if we take a more comprehensive look at the pay that elected officials get, would probably be more meaningful and probably be more equitable, as opposed to just this bill, which addresses just senatorial salaries, which then, I believe at this point, to be inequitable in comparison to which then, I believe, at this point, to be inequitable, in comparison to everybody else. We shouldn't demean ourselves for what we do. We have a very important role in this whole process of the government of this island. Yes, we are constantly the targets for things, that sometimes that we are not even responsible for. We are blamed for many things, and yet we have to sit and take it. But at this point in time, if you were just kind of bring this back up, just for the sake of giving another shot at it, we've had so many different shots at it. Let's put this to rest, and let's address this in the next legislature. I oppose the motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Is there anyone else who would like one more opportunity, last opportunity to add to speak, who have not spoken on the motion? Okay, so there is then, or there are objections, so I'm going to call for the vote.
Roll call.
I'm going to need two, three. Okay, roll call. On the motion to reconsider Bill 201.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggins.
Okay, senators, we're voting. Please call the senator.
Senator Uggins, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldan. Senator Espaldan, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Sniklis. Senator Sniklis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Senator Torres.
Before I read the votes, I know Senator, you're raising your hand. Are you changing your vote?
No.
Oh, okay. Because that's the only time that I would entertain anything else, okay.
Point of inquiry, Madam Speaker?
Yes.
This is a vote to reconsider 201.
Yes.
If 201 passes, we still need to vote on whether or not 201, it's to reconsider it for the agenda.
The reconsideration is to place it on the agenda, and then, of course, before we actually do the voting, like all other bills, okay?
And it will also have a moment on second reading file as well.
It would go into the motion, which, you're right, which would be in second reading, and then, when the time comes to call for that bill number, then the motion would be to place it in third for discussion.
All right.
And before it goes down to the voting file. Okay, so, the votes are ten yays, and four nays, and one absent, excused absence. So the motion carries. Senator, you're recognized for other motions.
Madam Speaker, I don't have any other motions, other than legislative concurrences.
Okay, and legis, yeah, we are in legislative concurrences.
From the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District, on the nominee, actually, number one, I think it's pending submission of a committee report. Is that correct, Renee? Yeah. So for number two.
For number two.
We'll just leave number one on there until, for number two, the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District, on the nomination of John T. Cavill to serve as a member of the Gania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners, with my committee's recommendation to confirm my move that this be placed in the voting file.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
From Senator Sniklis's Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development, on the nomination of William West Cassidy to serve as an insurance business officer representative for the Guam Banking and Insurance Board, with his committee's recommendation to do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
From Senator Dennis's Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizens, on the nomination of Nadine T. Sepeda to serve as a licensed mental health counselor representative on the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, with his committee's recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
Okay, from Senator, from the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Historic Preservation, on the nomination of Carl Dominguez to serve as a member of Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners, with Senator Barnes's committee's recommendation to confirm my move that this be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
From the same Senator Sniklis's Committee on the nomination of N. Tanet Johnson to serve as a real estate broker member of the Real Estate Commission, with his committee's recommendation to confirm my move that this be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, no objections, so ordered.
From the same committee, on the nomination of Geraldine M. Leonguero to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, with his committee's recommendation to confirm my move that this be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
From Senator Barnes's same committee, on the nomination of Jolie Liston, doctor, Ph.D., archaeology, to serve as an archaeologist of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, with her committee's recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
From Senator Sniklis's same committee, on Reni Laneta, to serve as a member of the ABC Board, with the recommendation to do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, objections, so ordered.
And from Senator Barnes's same committee, on the nomination of David Lottz to serve as a planning representative of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, with her recommendation to do confirm that move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, objections, so ordered.
From Senator Frank Uggins's Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, on the nomination of Elise McDonald-Iriarte to serve as a judge of the Superior Court of Guam, with his committee's recommendation to confirm that move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
From Senator Sniklis's same committee, on the nomination of Geraldine Emily Leonguero to serve as a member of the ABC Board, with the recommendation to do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
No objection.
On the motion, without any objection, well, I'm sorry, we did do that, didn't we? That's why I was kind of hesitating, number seven. So is that a repeat?
I'm sorry, she's.
Huh? Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, that was, yeah, just.
Okay, so that's a repeat, then. So you can go into number thirteen.
From Senator Barnes's same committee, on the nomination of Eliza Paulino to serve as a member of Gora Board of Commissioners, with the recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
From my committee, Madam Speaker, on the nomination of Jesse Rosario to serve as a member of the Guam Motion and Fisheries Management Council, with the recommendation to do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
From Senator Rodriguez's same committee, on the nomination of Ray Tahaji to serve as a physician assistant representative on the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, with the recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
And from the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, on Vice Speaker Cruz's committee, on the nomination of Michael Tafasha to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission, with the recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, hearing objections, so ordered.
What I don't see is, this was brought up in Rules, Senator Arissa Underwood's Committee on Education, on the nomination of Mark Mendiola to serve as a member of the Guam Education Policy Board, with Senator Underwood's committee's recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Senator Underwood, for calling that to my attention. And also, I'll just move, the clerk handed me a note, so I'll go ahead and move number one, from my committee, on the appointment of Terrence M. Brooks to serve as a member of the EPA Board of Directors, with the recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Can I just ask the clerk if we missed anyone?
No, I think we've got everyone now. Thank you.
But, we covered, okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. So we are in the second reading file, and the first bill on the agenda is Bill Number 168-33. Senator Frank Uggins, you're recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much for allowing me to be able to speak on Bill Number 168. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 168 as substituted by the author in the third reading file for consideration by the body.
Sorry, that's as substituted, one second, Senator.
By the author. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the version, and I certainly hope that our colleagues have a copy of this, if you notice the numerical sequence, Bill Number 168, this piece of legislation was introduced last year, and because of the nature of the original proposal, which would have imposed a significant fine for lack of reporting, anywhere from ten thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, we, there were some concerns raised during the course of the public hearing. We brought those concerns to several individuals, inclusive of legal minds, and this is the amended version that was recommended by virtue of individuals who were taking a look at this. We do have a requirement, reporting requirement, Madam Speaker, as it applies to reporting abortion activities. And what it is, is, it was brought to our attention, that when we introduced this initial legislation, that the enforcement of the existing code was extremely difficult for the government of Guam, primarily because of how it was presented. So this bill, Madam Speaker, we went back, we took into consideration the due process for these businesses, or these clinics that are conducting these activities. We also sought legal assistance in regards to how this can be enforceable. And this is the version that was proposed in terms of the language. So if I can just highlight, on Section 2, Madam Speaker, there were several items that were added to Chapter 3, Article 2, Chapter 3, Title 10, in regards to the preparation of these reports, and who would own that particular responsibility, such as the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the territorial registrar. Section 3 also highlights the requirement for a complete report. And one thing I want to bring to the attention of everyone, Madam Speaker, is that it would make it a penalty of perjury, if in fact, the reports are not complete. If you revert back to Section 2, the requirement for the reporting information would be provided by the territorial registrar out of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and then, based on that form, and that format, that information must be provided by the respective clinics. Madam Speaker, if you proceed on to Section 4, it's just clarifying, once again, in regards to the requirement for this reporting, that it be met, and that the Office of the Attorney General, the representatives, had brought to our attention, that it needed to cross-reference the reporting requirements with public health, and also with the other sections of the code, so that in fact, it can be enforceable. And then, Madam Speaker, the same comment can be applied towards the subsequent sections, is making sure that it's encoded in the different sections of the Guam Code annotated, so that in fact, the respective agencies, inclusive of the Office of the Attorney General, inclusive of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, that these reports are completed, and that any law that is enacted certainly is enforceable. So Madam Speaker, if you take a look at the original piece of legislation, and you take a look at the substituted version, there is a significant deviation, only because there were concerns raised about the enforceability, and the imposition of the penalties, financial penalties, and this is what the committee came up with in regards to being able to ensure that these reports are complete in nature. Madam Speaker, I want to also say this much, that if in fact, the reporting is complete, and meets all the required timelines as provided herein, then there would be no penalties associated with any individual that conducts these activities. So the intent is to ensure that we as a community have a complete report, in terms of these activities taking place, the abortions taking place on our island, and the impact it's having on our entire island community. So Madam Speaker, I ask for the consideration of the members of the body to support this particular legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, does anyone who would like to speak on the motion, 168? There being none, so the motion, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Espaldan, you're recognized. On the motion for Bill 168?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'm just, if I may have just a minute, because I had asked the legal counsel, just for a clarification on something, so I'm awaiting some response from the legal counsel, so if you'd just give me a minute, or at least until the legal counsel finds the answer.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak while we're waiting for that? So we'll take a brief recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Esporton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the time that you allowed to verify some information with legal counsel, and as that, I have no objections to this, this measure. But I thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. You're welcome. So on the motion to send 168 to third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Now, let me see. Senator Frank Uggan in 318.
[inaudible]
Yes. No, because the others are not in yet, and the one that I have that's already in is 318. Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 318-33COR, as substituted by the primary sponsor, into the third reading file for consideration by the body, Madam Speaker. Okay, Madam Speaker, I understand that the committee chair that heard this particular piece of legislation would like to be here during the course of this deliberation, so I would like to you to, to him joining us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Senator. So we're going to go on then to Bill Number 343-33. Senator Munier Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidosmasi, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number 343-33COR, as amended by the sponsor, be put into the third reading, and if I can briefly discuss it.
Briefly. Senator, you may proceed.
Sidosmasi, Tallo, Madam Speaker, I did say briefly, because we've had countless public hearings on this, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when we started this journey, it was to help those who were truly suffering from symptoms of debilitating illnesses. It was to help those suffering from cancer, from PTSD, from rheumatoid arthritis, just, and many other illnesses, and that these patients will have an access to an alternative to opiates and highly addictive medicines. The people of Guam, Madam Speaker, voted for this initiative overwhelmingly, and I want to share that we must facilitate their will and carefully implement this program that is truly patient-focused. Madam Speaker, I want to share with you that the progress we have made since the 2014 referendum has been substantial, and like I said earlier, we have held countless, countless public hearings and informational hearings to understand our patients' concerns with our medical cannabis program. And I want to share with you that our goal since 2014 was to ensure that patients can easily access their medicine as affordably and as safely as possible. Madam Speaker, I want to share that there have been some major development made in the medical cannabis industry in the nation, and one that comes to mind that wasn't included on the KC Conception, the Second Cannabis Act of 2013, was that of laboratory testing. And we needed to incorporate some of these into the KC Conception Cannabis Use Act. I want to make it clear, Madam Speaker, that the government should not be in the waiting room with a patient and their doctor when making a decision to use medicinal cannabis. I want to say that these amendments will give clear guidance, guidelines, for our medical cannabis program. I do want to share with you that based on the definitions and sections, we have a total of 23 sections, new sections, 13 new definitions and clarifications of a few other definitions. I want to share with you that registration ID card is optional for patients. A doctor's certification will justify valid endorsement. Caregivers, responsible officials, couriers, and medical cannabis business agents will be required to have an ID card. The process for a patient, Madam Speaker, once a practitioner provides their patient with a written certification, the doctor submits a copy of the certification to the department, which you and I know that that's the Department of Public Health. The patient has their copy of a written certification stamped by the department. The patient can use their written certification to purchase from dispensaries, or they can go through the process to receive a registry identification card. A designated caregiver, Madam Speaker, must also apply for a registry identification card. I want to share with you that there are six different license classifications. The, there are three commercial cultivation types of licenses, which includes a commercial manufacturing facility license, a dispensary license, and a medical cannabis laboratory. The process for a business, Madam Speaker, is your responsible official will apply and pay for the application fee. After 30 days, you pay for your license fee and receive your license. Third, after a license, you apply for a permit to operate and pay for the permit to, to operate. A permit to operate. The permit to operate will include inspections of the facility. Additionally, Madam Speaker, we have added new provisions to safeguard a medical cannabis business from unknowingly become a criminal enterprise. A business must declare to the department whether they will cease operations before their expiration date. Madam Speaker, a business must follow proper procedures to destroy any medical marijuana before cessation, cessation occurs. The permit is the authorization to commence their business operations, revoking the permit to operate because of compliance of the act will give the cannabis business the ability to possess cannabis until they get back into compliance. We've also included provisions to revoke licenses and destroy cannabis when a business violates the provisions of the act, Madam Speaker. And again, these provisions are necessary to prevent a business from unknowingly becoming a criminal enterprise. As you know, Madam Speaker, we've taken the successes from that of what's happening in the nation, and made sure that we include provisions of that same to have the regulations, the rules in place. Madam Speaker, the testing laboratories are another provision added that will ensure that the medical cannabis on Guam is medical-grade. When we had the public hearings, Madam Speaker, there was concern that, that there would be cannabis utilization that would have contaminants, and that would, and that would not be safe. So one of the major hurdles that we had looked at was making sure that because the 2013 Act did not have the laboratories included, that we included it in this provision. Madam Speaker, I want to say that there are currently 28 states and counting that have legalized the access to medical cannabis. I want to say that, all with varying laws, all with varying successes and failures, and with these new amendments, Madam Speaker, to the KC Conception Compassionate Cannabis Use Act of 2013, the success of each states were considered, and many were incorporated into this bill. I say that, Madam Speaker, because we as a committee have taken the time to engage with the community, with the public hearings, and also have been in tune with what has been happening in our nation. I want to say, Madam Speaker, that I'm really hopeful, I am maybe praying, that my colleagues will consider this bill, and if they need to make some amendments, I hope they make thoughtful amendments if they're needed. Like I said, we really, really tried to take the input of all those who made the time to come to these hearings. We've engaged in all aspects and all the stakeholders, Madam Speaker, and I want to share with you that this bill affects some of our most vulnerable, and, and we want to make sure that patients receive safe and affordable access to medicinal cannabis. Madam Speaker, I want to say that the number, that the number of folks that voted for this two years ago, in the 2014 campaign, was over 19,932, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, it was an overwhelming support for this issue. I also want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that when we look at this implementation and what the will of the people wanted, and we realized when we were going through the process, that we, we, we did not put in some of the provisions that I've mentioned to you earlier. This truly is a measure that will, will enhance what is existing today, and Madam Speaker, I want to share with you that each day, someone here on our island is diagnosed with cancer. And every one to two days, Madam Speaker, we have someone dying of cancer. And I want to share with you, as the days go on, and as we look into our loved ones and those that we know within the community that are dying, they're not dying at an old age anymore, Madam Speaker. The majority of them today are dying from cancer. I remember the time when, when cardiac arrests were, was the number one, diabetes. Now, it's not even any of that, it's, it's cancer. I mean, we've, we hear too often that Guam has some of the rarest cancers that have, that, that professionals in the, in the medical industry are, are just trying to study. And Madam Speaker, I want to share with you, and I know that you share some of the same thoughts, of, of having to see loved ones leave, and not being able to at least be given that alternative, or that family to, to help make that alternative, to see whether, instead of wanting to go through chemotherapy and all that, that they already know they're probably in their last stages, that they want to die with some dignity. And if we can afford this alternative to them, and we should, because our people of Guam voted for it, I think we should give that. I'm really hoping that my colleagues will help me finally pass this enhanced version, and give our people that alternative to those who are truly suffering from debilitating health issues, and give them that alternative. So, ndakulun, sidosmasi, I know I have a companion, but Madam Speaker, I hope that our colleagues will help me support this issue. Sidosmasi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Sir Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate all the work that's been going into this issue since our people voted for this measure to become enacted. Clearly medicinal cannabis is, is something that our community wants us to make available as an option to our people. And as I'm going through the bill, and I notice on page 58, the testing laboratories from medical cannabis is, is there. It's very well-written, and it's very thorough, and I wanted to basically highlight this particular section as it relates to the overall intent of the legislation, for us to be moving forward with cannabis as a, as a medicine. If we're going to be offering something as a medicine, this testing is critical. It's very important for us to make sure that it's medical-grade, that there is that medicinal aspect of it, and that it is providing the necessary substances in order to treat the conditions of the patients that are affected. So I wanted to highlight that, because it's important for us to realize and consider that when we discuss the companion legislation. But as far as this particular piece of legislation with respect to the medicinal aspect, I rise to congratulate the author for all of the work that she to congratulate the author for all of the work that she's done thus far on this issue. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anyone who would like to speak? Senator Espoada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And again, I also would like to commend the author and the mover of this bill. However, I still have some questions. I haven't had the chance to really go through some of the substantive changes, perhaps, from the original, so I will ask it in question form if the author will yield to the questions.
Senator, you...
The first question, Madam Speaker, and again, it's even in relevance to what the previous speaker was talking about in terms of lab testing. Within this bill, the question is, is there anywhere in this bill that kind of dictates what the levels of THC or other chemical properties should be in not just the flowers or the buds of the marijuana plant, but also in the edibles and the other manufactured tinctures or what else, what the other products that may be derived that could be used for the patients? In other words, is there a set of standards that is established here?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
I'll try my very best, Madam Speaker. Yes, the Department, Madam Speaker, as it relates to testing laboratories for medical cannabis, shall identify and designate one or more independent testing laboratories. The laboratories shall be independent from any licensed medical cannabis business. The laboratory testing must be able to determine the concentration of the THC in the CBD, the presence and identification of molds and fungus, the presence and concentration of fertilizers and other nutrients, the presence of heavy metals and other contaminants, including pesticides and active ingredient identifications. Does that answer it, or do you want me to elaborate more?
Well, I think what I'm getting to, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate that information...
I can add, though.
No, here's specifically what I'm looking for. In any medicine, pharmaceuticals, I should say, there is X amount of an active ingredient that will address a certain ailment and so forth. I take it from the list that was read that it does not include any recommendations in terms of if somebody is, you know, in other words, dosages. How would, I guess my question is, how would a doctor be able to determine what kind of marijuana would be needed to alleviate the conditions of his patient without any guidance? Because, you know, from all studies and from information just out there, right, you have varying degrees of strength and potency of marijuana. And so I'm just wondering if there's anywhere in this bill that kind of addresses that. Because even if you use street talk, there is such things as some people smoke leaves, right, which is not as potent as the flowers or the buds. And even the flowers or the buds have a different potency, depending on the type of plant it is and perhaps even the cultivation method and whatnot. And even to the point where there is now, what I understand, a flower or a bud that they kind of term as chronic. And chronic basically represents the potency that is at a very high level. And so I guess the question is really shaped around that in going down this road, and it's a new road, and there's no doubt that the voters asked for this, but now the devil is in the details, and this is, I think, what we're trying to understand. Or is there a mechanism that somebody's going to come up with those rules and those guidelines from which a lab can then test for and then say, this is definitely in line with that standard?
Senator, you yield to that question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. May what the good senator is talking about, it could probably be established through the patient-focused certification, which is available through the ASA, which is the standard of the use of medicinal cannabis. As it states, there is a guideline that all the states are utilizing right now that has all the breakdowns and the details, and that the Department will be working with those standards. I don't have the book with me right now, and if he wants further clarification, you can give me a minute recess and I'll pull it out from my office right now.
That's not necessary at this point, Madam Speaker.
And I just want you to know that those procedures are...
First of all, what is ASA?
Give me a second, Madam Speaker, so I don't make a mistake.
Thank you.
The legislature is back in session. Senator, I understand you have an answer to what the ASC is and maybe to respond to the other questions offered by Senator Espoada.
Madam Speaker, I want to share with you that, based on the ASA that I've shared with the good senator, it is the Americans for Safe Access, which is a patient-focused analysis on the patchwork of state laws as it deals with medical marijuana and access in the United States. I guess the other question that was asked was about the percentage of the THC or cannabinoids that are needed in there. My answer to him would be, the practitioner who works closely with a patient will decide, based on the situation on hand or the issue, the debilitating health issue on hand, what would best serve that. And I'm not a doctor, I couldn't, or a practitioner, I couldn't be able to answer that. I want to say that when the committee was working closely with all the constituents on hand and looking at a process, we felt that even working with our counterparts, committee counterparts in the United States, the most advantageous access that we would look to work with the Department would be this use of the ASA and working closely with what the successes are in the mainland. So that's what I have on hand right now, and I await any other inquiries, if any.
Okay, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, which leads really to the next question, which is the point that I really was trying to get to. Is there anywhere in this bill that mandates that whoever will be overseeing this program, if it's public health and whatnot, whether they are mandated to refer and use the ASA?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and if you'd just give me time, I'll have him look at the bill.
Well, it's 60-some pages, and that's why I think the author is probably most familiar with it. If she can just point to it, I think we can get to this question real fast. Or if she'd prefer, Madam Speaker, we can take a recess and we can take a look at it all the way through.
You know, you're right. I think this might be a good time to recess, because I understand is that, you know, we do have this special luncheon today, so we will recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Recession. Until 2:00 this afternoon. We ended with Senator Espoada, and so Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, between the time that we took a break for lunch to just a few minutes ago, I've been receiving all kinds of pertinent information on this particular issue. So I was wondering if I might be able to perhaps reserve my time for later on if the need so should arise, and just give up the floor at this point and have others who might want to speak on this bill speak.
I will do it if I do get others who would like to speak, so...
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the motion, is there anybody who would like then to speak on Bill 343? Senator Blaser, recognized.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Speaker. First off, Madam Speaker, the other side, I want to applaud the author of this piece of legislation for the work that she and the committee has done and continue, has been doing over, literally, over the last few years, a couple of years, in trying to be able to move forward on the mandate by the people through the referendum of which why this particular piece of legislation was before us. It's an undaunting task, and it's an undaunting task because this is basically new, for lack of a better term. And I'm sure that there have been many meetings, many discussions, back and forth, and being able to try to cross the Ts and not the Is. However, when you're dealing with an issue such as this, there are the onset, truly, a number of questions that you really don't have answers to because this is new. And the answers are basically formulated as you go on. And while you want to base yourself on past experiences, recent case law, medical practices, scientific studies, fact of the matter is, there isn't a whole lot. As a matter of fact, many of the places around the world or in the states that have enacted similar pieces of legislation and have spent just as much time, but also had 10 times more resources, today find themselves in, with some troubling or some troublesome spots. Because things that have come up, which very honestly could not have been conceived or perceived at the time the legislation was enacted or the legislation was being deliberated, there was nothing to base themselves on. I don't think, Madam Speaker, that there's anyone, and I'll speak for myself, but I also speak based on my observations. I don't think that there's anyone in this body here that would do everything... I don't think that there's anyone in this body here that would do everything in their powers, individual powers or collective powers, to try to provide, in this instance, in this instance of these patients, the best service, medicine, procedure, whatever possible, so they can continue to live and try to continue to live their lives in dignity and free of So that's not the issue, and that shouldn't be the issue. I, for one, despite a number of arguments and concerns and whatnot, espouse and believe that maybe, and that there are, in this case, medicinal uses for marijuana. I think you know, Madam Speaker, that I think that I'm the only one in here that can actually say that I've actually worked on the side of law enforcement, drug enforcement, actually commanded the drug unit, and working active cases on illicit trafficking of, in this particular case, marijuana. I've seen the industry, I've seen the enterprise, I've seen, and I'm talking about the illicit side, I'm talking about the criminal side, I've seen the steps that they take, that they will take to be able to continue to gain their criminal profits. And so naturally, one of the things that I look forward here is, one, how do we put together something so that we remove, we eliminate, we reduce, we alleviate the possible criminal element that could infiltrate this whole purpose? And really destroy what this purpose is for? So I know that this was an undaunting task. And based on discussions this morning, I gather with all the appendices and all the reports and all the others, I'm assuming that if we were to appendicitize, if we were to attach the studies, the reports, the guidelines, the protocols, the procedures, that it would be, this bill would be ten times the volume, ten times the length that it is right now. But maybe that's necessary. Maybe that's necessary so that we can alleviate some of the, some of the concerns that people may have, some of the concerns that I may have, that I have, so that, again, it goes back to we can cross our Ts and dot our Is. For the purposes of trying to move this conversation along and try to, at the end of the day, work on a bill, produce a bill that this body could say that produced, that had brought clarity to this, and I'd like to make, the author could yield to another series of questions that I have on a series of, I guess, concerns. And recognizing, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, we're not going to be finished with this bill I, too, after I've done with these series of questions, may ask for an opportunity to come back. Again, the whole purpose is to make this a better bill. I think we owe it to the patients, we owe it to our people, we owe it to the community, that if we're going to release this product, if this product is going to be out there, that we have crossed our Ts and we dotted our Is as best we can with what we got. So with that, Madam Speaker, one of my first concerns is actually found on page sixteen, subsection 122505, prohibitions, restrictions, and limitations on the medical use of cannabis and criminal penalties. And at the bottom of the page, starting on line twenty-four, or line twenty-two, it says, criminal prosecution is civil penalty for possession and use of cannabis. Now, this is basically saying that it does not relieve the qualified patient or primary caregiver from criminal prosecution is civil penalty for possession and use of cannabis in a school bus or public vehicle, on school grounds or property, in the workplace of a qualified patient's or primary caregiver's employment, or in a public park, vacation center, youth center, or other public place. I guess my question is, should we also include drug-free schools, drug-free school zones?
Should it include, I'm sorry, I didn't get the other ones.
Because it's already a statute.
Which one?
But if we were to include as a subitem E, drug-free school zones.
Oh, okay, so that'd be your questions then for...
Yes, and I question why it wasn't there, and I question if it can be put there.
Yes. Senator, do you yield to that question? Which is, should be, starting on page sixteen and into seventeen, of the...
Madam Speaker, if that is concern about that amendment, I guess when the committee was looking over the amendment, we did look at the provisions for those patients or students that were under special guidelines for those with certain debilitating health issues that were still going to school, those with epilepsy and all that. But if that's an amendment on the floor that my good brother wants to include, I have no problems including that as an amendment.
Well, Madam Speaker, then it brings to...
Because it was meant that all those who are truly suffering from debilitating health issues and that usually need a place to be able to have the medicinal cannabis dispensed to them, and it's usually at their home of residence or where they sleep.
Then, Madam Speaker, for the purposes of making clarity, can I ask for a little recess, and I'd like to be able to consult with legal counsel on this. I see her concern, I see, you know, and the thing that she raises. However, I'm just, my concern here is that it actually then, in this fashion, it will contradict what current statute is.
Okay, we'll take a brief recess.
Okay, we'll take a brief recess.
The legislature is back in session. Senator, my understanding is that Senator Munia Barnes is that would be to set 343 back until tomorrow morning?
And I...
Tomorrow morning, and I'm going to come in. Senators, it's going to be set aside. So please read whatever bills you have, and then we'll... I mean, to read this bill to be ready for tomorrow morning. So we're going to move on to the next bill. And, Senator, yes, I'm sorry.
So if I may just inquire, Madam Speaker, so we're going to basically pick up on this bill tomorrow morning. But now, are we going to place some kind of time limit for... I mean, are we going to spend the whole day again trying to put this thing together tomorrow? When we have 33 bills? Or are we going to say, you know, if it doesn't pass muster within an hour, then we're going to have to put it aside and move on to the next?
Normally, no. I mean, normally, we don't set a timeframe specifically. I know the only thing we do is only allowing people a 15-minute maximum time to speak, but not so much in terms of how long a bill would be. But I do know is that the body here has been operating very well in regulating its time and meeting, of course, the number of bills that we have on the agenda. So I think that, for the most part, and I'm sure because Senator Spalding will have this opportunity, then Senator Frank Blas as well, then in having this extra time, that I don't expect that tomorrow we would spend too much time to allow the members then to read the bills.
So...
But I'm almost sure that we're not going to be spending too much time and be able to move on with all the other bills.
Thank you.
I think, Madam Speaker, in all fairness, I've already spoken to the author, and I've already expressed her some of the other concerns that I had. And giving us this time, she can be able to work with it so that, really, tomorrow is just a matter of the discussion of that at 9 o'clock.
Yes, and I thank you very much for that. And Senator Spalding, I'd like to offer you the same thing as well, is to continue to work with the author of the bill. And legal counsel will be here to assist you. And then that way, we'll be able to move on. Okay, so 343 then is set aside. For, Senators, also for your information, just because I don't want to mislead anyone, as I did earlier with Senators Nicholas, that when the motion was made for 201, that the procedure has been, or the ruling has been, that even during COR, is that the bills are placed in numerical order unless a specific bill or a specific confirmation be placed first, then, or a resolution be placed before a bill, then we do that. During session, at the time also, whenever bills are being placed on the agenda, I was reminded also by COR and the clerk, is that those bills also go in numerical order. So therefore, Bill 201 then numerically placed in the order of all the other numbers. So that being said, then Bill 201 then will be called, and Senator McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As we said earlier on the motion to reconsider, I would like to make a motion to place 201-33 Committee on Rules into the third reading file and discuss.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I don't... The legislation that I'm proposing is something that has been introduced, vetted. We talked about this many times, six or seven times. It's been tried to amend. And basically, it takes us back... I'm just going to explain the process, how we got here. In 2010, the legislature was attached to the judges. Whatever the judges made, the legislature made half of that. And in 2010, the legislature had increased their pay, I think about $5,000. So that's where the number 55,00307 comes in, is because we went back to pre-2010 money that the legislature was making, which was 55,000. That was in 2012, when I first came in, is when we got... Was the second year that we had an increase of $5,000 to 60. And then, of course, everyone knows about the $85,000. So this is to go back to 55,307, Madam Speaker. And I've said it for the last four years, so I don't have much more to say on this bill. Obviously, if there's an objection, if there's some amendments, I'll listen to what the body has to say. And, you know, I hope for their support. Thank you.
On the motion? Does anyone who would like to speak on 201, on the motion? On the motion then to send 201 to the third reading file without any objections ordered. We're going to take a brief recess.
Okay, you want to cover for me, Mr. Vice Speaker, then?
Madam Speaker, by my, Bill 344-33, COR is amended by the sponsor, which is an act to add new sub-article one to Article 25 of Chapter 12, Title 10 Guam Code annotated, relative to adding a home cultivation provision to the Waukin KC Conception, the Second Compassionate Cannabis Act of 2013, to the third reading. I will literally briefly discuss this. Madam Speaker, I want to go back and say, during the countless public hearings held discussing the rules and regulations of medicinal cannabis and the affordable patient access to marijuana, was highlighted every single time, specifically, home cultivation and the access to that. Home cultivation, Madam Speaker, helps to fill the gap of people who may not have insurance or may otherwise not be able to afford medical cannabis at stores. Under this law, Madam Speaker, a patient is able, would be able to grow a, six mature and six immature medical cannabis plants within their home. That is the gist of Bill 344. And again, I will note that at the countless public hearings within the community, it being in the north, central, and south, every hearing had the question of the desire of home cultivation. So I ask that my colleagues help me support this issue. Senator Massey.
You're welcome. On the motion, 344. Going once. Two. Three, don't say I didn't give you guys any opportunity. Motion to send down to the third reading file, Bill 344-33 is down. 347, Senator Rispicio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 347-33 in its, an act to repeal and reenact certain sections of the code relative to establishing the Recycling Revolving Fund as a separate account, not to be commingled with the general fund. I move to place this in the third reading file.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I humbly ask for support for this bill from our colleagues, simply because it's a very critical component relative to tightening up the Recycling Revolving Fund. And I believe that this is one way to prevent cash transfers out of the fund by giving the Guam Environmental Protection Agency the statutory authority to provide for a separate bank account, not from the general fund, to provide for their own checking account so that the funds that are to be remitted to the Recycling Revolving Fund are put into a separate account. And so this is what this one-page legislation would do. Thank you.
On the motion, on Bill 347, any discussion? No objection? No objection, so ordered. Bill 347-33 sent down to the third reading file. Bill number 348, Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also move to place Bill 348-33, COR, in the third reading file, and it's relative to requiring the Department of Administration to report to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency the current balance and transactions of the Recycling Revolving Fund, and to further require this information to be posted on the Guam Environmental Protection Authority website. I move this be placed in the third reading file with a very brief discussion.
On the motion, Bill 348, any objections?
Well, just very quickly, just, so this bill is also companion legislation to Bill 347, and I think it would provide additional statutory authority so that the EPA will know exactly what has been done with respect to the Recycling Revolving Fund, and that all of these transactions be posted online, so it provides for greater transparency and accountability. And so I humbly request again support from our colleagues in order for this bill to pass. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. So on the motion, does anyone? No objection to 348-33 to go to the third reading file without any objections, and so ordered. On Bill 351?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, and to our fellow colleagues. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Bill number 351-33, COR, as substituted by the primary sponsor to the third reading file, please.
And you may proceed, Senator, to speak on it.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first of all, I want to thank the Oversight Committee who conducted the oversight or the public hearing on Bill number 351 for not only conducting the oversight hearing, but also reporting this out of this committee. Initially, the piece of legislation that was introduced dealt specifically with Customs and Quarantine. And in that particular situation, immediately upon the introduction of that, a number of Oversight Chairs for public safety agencies or law enforcement, uniform personnel, they approached the Oversight Chairs in this body, Madam Speaker, and shared similar concerns. Parks and Rec was one, another one was Department of Youth Affairs, and there were a few other law enforcement entities where, in fact, the hazardous pay was rescinded and suspended by the Department of Administration back in June of this year. Why? Because they conducted their own research. They realized that there was no authorization by law, based on their opinion and their findings, Department of Administration. They recognized that there was no direct authorization for hazardous pay to be compensated to these individuals within these respective agencies. So, Madam Speaker, immediately after that, and even during the course of the public hearing, not in the public hearing itself, but sideline discussions, and then subsequent to that, there were concerns raised about why are you isolating it just to one particular law enforcement entity, Customs and Quarantine, when in fact, the policy should be all-encompassing and affect the other law enforcement agencies? So that's what we have here, Madam Speaker, as substituted by the primary sponsor. It, I want to clarify that there are key components to this overall policy that is being proposed in Bill 351. And it reads, notwithstanding subsection 6304 of Article 3, Chapter 6, Title 4, Guam Code annotated, the Civil Service Commission, Civil Service Hazardous Environmental Pay Policy and Procedures, or any other provision of law, rule, regulation, and executive order, for the purposes of this act, hazardous duty positions shall be identified as follows. And it encompasses the law enforcement entities that were directly impacted. One is all sworn officers of the Customs and Quarantine Agency. Two is all sworn officers of the Guam Airport Police. Three, all sworn conservation officers of the Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources of the Department of Agriculture. Four, all sworn Guam Park Patrol Officers of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Five, all youth service workers and/or social workers who are engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation work at the Department of Youth Affairs. And six, those employed by the Office of the Attorney General whom he or she specifically designates. And this is an additional provision that I think we need to all closely heed. The following paragraph reads, the appointing authorities of these agencies, of Customs and Quarantine Agency, Guam International Airport Authority, Department of Agriculture, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Youth Affairs, Office of the Attorney General, and the Department of Administration shall identify the direct exposure personnel, and upon exposure, shall be entitled to the 10% hazardous pay differential, as authorized by this amended provision. So, Madam Speaker, key components is the authorizing authority within that particular agency, which traditionally is either the chief, or the director, or the administrator of that law enforcement entity. And the Department of Administration must identify and work collectively in regards to ensuring that proper hazardous pay is paid to our law enforcement agencies. Madam Speaker, I want to say this much, that over the last six months, since June, when hazardous pay was suspended, our law enforcement personnel continue to carry out their jobs and their responsibilities despite being exposed to hazardous conditions, because they recognize their duty and their responsibility to the community. But this is a provision that was previously authorized to all of these law enforcement individuals, uniform personnel, and certainly, we need to not recognize that, based on certain circumstances associated with these different agencies and their responsibilities, that certainly hazardous pay, that particular program was established specifically for situations such as that, so these individuals can be compensated accordingly. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for your consideration, your support of this particular proposal. I understand that it's transitioned from initially dealing with one agency to setting a government-wide policy that would require agency heads or administrators and the Department of Administration to work collectively in regards to this. Let me also, Madam Speaker, just close by saying, is there, or asking the question, is there an existing process where some of these law enforcement agencies can use today? And I have to extend my kudos to the Department of Youth Affairs, because they did reach out to GOSH, which is the Guam Office of Safety and Health, out of the Department of Labor. There presently are no individuals within that particular section, because it was previously, my understanding that is that it was previously federally funded. So there are no individuals carrying out those responsibilities. So the director, as well as another employee within Department of Labor, took it upon themselves, reviewed their request, and was able to extend that to the DYA uniform personnel. But, Madam Speaker, what this would do is allow that process to continue to exist, but if there are any other positions, other than those alluded to here, or highlighted here, of uniformed law enforcement personnel, then they would have to go through that regular process. In this case, it's a direct recognition that these law enforcement individuals do carry out certain responsibilities within specific situations, such as stated here, upon exposure, where in fact, they should be properly compensated hazardous pay. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for your consideration, the consideration of members of the body, to support this particular measure. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this bill. Madam Speaker, unless I'm mistaken, this is duplicative, if not redundant, because the Competitive Wage Act should have included all of these considerations when it made its determination of what the salaries were going to be. The fact that this legislature gave the public officers a 40% increase was to take into account all of these nuances. You don't become a public safety officer without having all of these trainings, and that's the reason why your salary is what it is. This is inclusive of everything that was done in the Competitive Wage Act. That was why, a few months ago, we corrected, or some members corrected and made the Department of Agriculture a police, a public safety. This has already been taken care of in the Competitive Wage Act. When they did the Competitive Wage Act and described what they were doing, they described the fact that they were in safety hazardous position environment, and that was taken into account in determining the amount of money that was going to be recommended by the HEY. This is giving another 10% on top of that, throwing off the entire equation and all the work that was done in HEY. That's the reason why I was also questioning, even when we did it with the accountants. You don't become a STPA without having have your degree. All of a sudden, it's, you get an additional 10% because you get a degree? It just doesn't make sense. All of these things could have and should have been included in the HEY study. It was, and that's the reason why Department of Administration said it couldn't, there was no authority to do anything else but what was already established by HEY. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Tom Adat, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when I, my committee conducted the public hearing on this particular bill, and at that hearing, what was discussed was the idea of providing authorization for, to provide hazardous pay for Customs and Quarantine Officers.
the HEY. This is giving another 10% on top of that, throwing off the entire equation and all the work that was done in HEY. That's the reason why I, I was also questioning even when we did it with the, with the, with the, um, accountants. You don't become a CPA without having, have your degree. All of a sudden, it's, you get an additional 10% because you get a degree? It, it, it just doesn't make sense. All of these things could have and should have been included in the, in the HEY study. It was, and that's the reason why Department of Administration said it couldn't, there was no authority to do anything else but what was already, um, established by HEY. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Tom Adat, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when I, um, my, my committee conducted the public hearing on this particular bill, and at that hearing, what was discussed was the, uh, idea of providing authorization for, to provide hazardous pay, uh, for, for customs and quarantine officers. And, um, and then, of course, when the bill, uh, the bill got substituted, and, uh, the substituted bill now includes all other law enforcement agencies, uh, but none of these people were there. So, I, I guess, I guess maybe it's reasonable to assume that, yeah, okay, all of them will accept the, the 10%, you know, the, uh, the hazardous duty pay, and basically identify all sworn officers, uh, to be, um, to be eligible to receive hazardous duty positions. Uh, so I'm concerned about, um, now that, that we've made it more comprehensive, uh, what is the fiscal impact? What would the fiscal impact be, uh, to these departments? Now, maybe in the subsequent, uh, budget years, uh, when they can plan for it, uh, they can, they can actually put it into their budget, uh, the additional hazardous duty pay. Uh, but, you know, this fiscal year is basically just started, and, um, will they have this in their budget? But now, it's interesting, if you take a look, that, um, this particular, uh, provision to, uh, grant the authorization for hazardous pay to the other, uh, law enforcement agencies, um, with the Guam, it, it really was an amendment to, uh, that provision of the law which authorized hazardous duty pay for the Guam Police Department. But in that particular section of the law, it directed that the chief of police, or the Guam Police Department, will basically adopt a table of organization and equipment, and in that table of organization, it will identify positions that, um, hazardous duty positions shall be identified in the table of organization and equipment. So that tells you that even in the police department, not every uniformed officer is eligible for, um, for, for hazardous duty pay. You know, if they have a uniformed officer who's manning the, uh, the, uh, I don't know, maybe the supply room or the evidence room, I, I don't know, is he, is he being exposed to, but, you know, to hazards? So just in reading, for example, in the existing law with GPD, it says hazardous duty positions shall be identified in the TONE. And I think one, one can, uh, deduce from that, 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 you know, not every uniformed officer is eligible for, for, um, hazardous duty pay. And, and so then in the amendment that we're making, now we're, we're saying, okay, although we started out with just the customs and quarantine, and I have no problem, I have no problem with, with authorizing the, the hazardous duty pay, but, but now, after the public hearing, now we're gonna amend the bill and make it comprehensive, and I, I think, because now it's, it's, it's changed substantially, we probably should have come back and, and had another hearing, or, 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 you know, and, and what's the ramifications to this? But the amendment that was made basically says, all sworn officers, uh, will now be eligible for hazardous duty pay. And, and, you know, even in, even in the Guam Police Department, not all sworn officers, it's, there's hazardous duty positions that are identified. So, you know, I, I'm not convinced that all sworn officers are equally, um, exposed to hazards, um, and, and so, and so, you know, it just, it just, um, it just doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem, um, that, that, that we should allow that sort of thing, because they're, they're not all, um, they're not all, um, exposed equally to, to hazards. You know, may, maybe the guy in the supply room, uh, or doing admin work certainly is not exposed to hazards that, um, the uniformed officer is exposed to when he's down at the port, uh, inspecting cargo that's coming in, or the guy up at the airport who's, uh, manning the, the, uh, the desk there, uh, looking for contrabands being brought in and whatnot. Uh, so I, I have concerns about now how, in addition to now adding it from one agency to all law enforcement agencies, and instead of just maybe language that identifies, um, uh, the positions. And now, it does, it does say, um, it does say that, um, I, I'll, I'll admit that on line 17 of the bill, it says that the, uh, the, um, "appointing authorities of these various departments shall identify the direct exposure personnel and upon exposure shall be entitled." So, on the one hand, we're saying, all sworn officers shall be identified, um, for, for the hazardous duty pay, and then at the bottom, we say, well, but then these, uh, directors of the department shall identify those who are direct, it's kinda, six of one, half a dozen the other. I'm, I'm somewhat confused as to, you know, so that's, that's a concern I have, Madam
On the motion, Senator Respechel, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Speaker. Um, Madam Speaker, I, um, notwithstanding the comments of the two previous speakers, I, I certainly rise in support of, uh, an approach to, to finally resolve this whole idea of hazardous pay, and, and when the Department of Administration ruled on its own that these positions have to be reviewed, it stopped the continuation of the hazardous pay, and, and this is why we are where we are right now. You know, on page two, lines nine through 11, when we're dealing specifically with the Department of Youth Affairs, and I spoke to the sponsor of the bill and the oversight chair for DYA, I'm proposing that we, instead of just limiting it to all youth service workers and/or social workers, we copy the language that's contained for the Attorney General's office, and say that those employed by the Department of Youth Affairs who are engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation work at the Department of Youth Affairs, and I only say this only because of, at DYA, it's a very special circumstances where you have program coordinators and other positions that are exposed to, to this kind of element that has warranted and justified them getting, uh, hazardous pay. And I'm speaking from my perspective and my role as a Department of Youth Affairs way back when, when I looked into the whole issue of hazardous pay for that department and, and how employees are being paid, and who is eligible, who's not eligible, the Department of Youth Affairs at that time went through, uh, exhaustive Civil Service Commission investigation, looking at how I implemented hazardous pay at, as the director of DYA at that time, and, and we got a clean bill of health. They said that certainly because once you, um, enter the youth correctional facility, or once you enter an environment where employees are exposed to juveniles that have been incarcerated or remanded to the Department of Youth Affairs, and that's what the purpose of this hazardous pay is, and so if we just limit it to youth service workers and social workers, we're not gonna be able to address those other positions that, that are eligible and entitled to hazardous pay in any way. On lines 14 through 19, the protection here is that the Director of Department of Youth Affairs, along with all the other agency heads identified here, has to identify the direct personnel exposure, and, and, and that provision is there to make it so that, um, those who are eligible for hazardous pay are going to be getting it. So I, I asked for consideration, and I writ, wrote the amendment out, so on line, so we place a new five to read, "those employed by the Department of Youth Affairs who are engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation work at the Department of Youth Affairs."
On the amendment.
I just, uh, have a question on that amendment.
Do you like to speak on the amendment?
Okay.
You're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I just want to address the author of the amendment in, uh, clarifying when you're talking about those employed by the Department of Youth Affairs. At one time, there were teachers, who were teachers there, but, um, paid by the Department of Education, in other words, employed by the Department of Education, so would they be included in that?
Do you, you answered the question?
Yeah, yeah, I, I recall that, um, the Senator's talking about the Lingfamagon, where there's a partnership between the Department of Education and the Department of Youth Affairs. They're exposed to that kind of, uh, environment, they're DOE employees, but they're, they're are receiving, at the time, they were receiving hazardous pay because of the environment, so we might, we might want to include them also, because they're not employees of DYA, they are employees of DOE. And so we might have to include a, another section for, or... Are there any, uh, DOE employees right now that are getting hazardous pay, generally? Senator Ogden? But they're not, if this is a comprehensive approach, then we might wanna...
Senators, please, uh, the, the conversation is not between the two of you, so we'll take a brief recess.[1281.74] a brief recess. The legislature's back in session.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, for that brief recess. So the, my amendment that I'm offering would read, "Those employed by the Department of Youth Affairs or who are assigned to the Department of Youth Affairs and who are engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation work at the Department of Youth Affairs."
Okay, that's the First Amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, on that amendment, is there any discussion? Senators, Paul Dunn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I know that I'm supposed to speak, and I will speak to just a specific amendment, but it speaks to the broader issue of what's happening here.
But please speak to the...
And I, and I will, Madam Speaker. The question then becomes, and I'm not really sure I had the verbatim correctly, the verbatim amendment, can you just read that real quickly, Madam Speaker?
Well, what it is, is that if you look at number six, where it says, "Those employed by..."
No, no, number five, Madam Speaker.
And you're right, no, but I'm telling you, "Those employed by..."
Okay.
"...the Department of Youth Affairs," they go up to the top where it says, "who are engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation work." Those are the individuals that are being...
Right.
It's being reworded, so it's not just now service workers and social workers.
Those, those employed by the Department of Youth Affairs who are engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation work.
And rehabilitation, yes.
And rehabili... I guess the question then begs, Madam Speaker, doesn't that include everybody up there? Anybody who's up at the Department of Youth Affairs is involved in detention, and anybody who's involved, works at the Department of Youth Affairs, is involved in, in some kind of rehabilitation. I mean, whether you're the secretary, whether you're the janitor, whether you're whatever, you're involved because that's the mission of, of the agency. And I don't really sure, you know, I'm not really sure that's really what the initial intent of the initial bill as introduced was. Even the author admits that when we went to public hearing, the public hearing was specific to the Department of Customs and Quarantine.
Mm-hmm.
We're in a whole different subject. We have not had a chance to talk to anybody from all these different agencies to understand exactly what the ramifications and what the impact will be, and who is involved, and what kind of exposure are we talking about in terms of exposure to hazardous, hazardous conditions? I don't understand it. And I, and I object on the principle that we have not had, again, a public hearing on this particular issue to include, include everybody, and not be able to question whether even the janitors or the secretaries would be able to receive hazardous pay for the job that they were hired to do, which is secretarial or janitorial work. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. If anybody else would like to speak on the motion, Senators, be sure to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm not looking to expand to make everybody eligible. What I'm trying to do here is recognize what's already occurring. And, and I'm just trying to provide the insight, and given the comments of the previous speaker shows a, a lack of understanding of what's going on at the Department of Youth Affairs. At the Department of Youth Affairs, you have positions other than youth service workers and social workers that are exposed to that kind of hazardous environment. Why are we gonna sit here and pretend that that situation doesn't exist? And so if we are claiming to provide a comprehensive approach to solve what's really happening at these agencies, I'm just standing up to, to give an insight that if you're gonna limit it to these positions of youth service workers and social workers, Madam Speaker and colleagues, we're not accomplishing what we set out to do in this amended version. And in working with the sponsor of the bill and the oversight chair, Senator Underwood, who recognizes that, yeah, if you're a janitor, and if you want to pinpoint that if you're a janitor and you're cleaning the Department of Youth Affairs Youth Correctional Facility because that's what you were hired to do, well, you weren't hired to be exposed to a hazardous environment. That's the whole basis of which hazardous pay is being paid. And they're not gonna get hazardous pay eight hours a day, five days a week, it's upon exposure. So I don't appreciate that my attempt to clarify what's actually happening is being misread to say that I'm expanding it so that everybody can be entitled to hazardous pay. I just shared with the body, Madam Speaker, and colleagues that when I was at the Department of Youth Affairs, I was the one who looked into how hazardous pay is being paid. And the Civil Service Commission at that time had a very exhaustive review of our department, and they came back and said, "What's happening at the Department of Youth Affairs should be emulated throughout the government of Guam." Hazardous pay exists for those employees that are exposed to a hazardous environment, and they're supposed to get hazardous pay upon exposure. It's not a, it's not eighty hours a pay period and ten percent of that. It's every time an employee goes into a hazardous environment, they claim those in fifteen-minute increments, and this is what hazardous pay is all about. You cannot just say that we shouldn't be giving maintenance workers hazardous pay because they're working in an environment that exposes them, in this case, to juvenile detention and rehabilitation work. So if we're, I don't know what the fate of the bill is because it, there's broader implications and other issues have been brought up, but I'm asking for support to adopt my amendment to just recognize what is happening at the Department of Youth Affairs and to recognize that my amendment truly reflects what's currently occurring. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There is an objection to the amendment. So all in favor then of the Respecho Amendment, which is, "Those employed by the Department of Youth Affairs who are engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation work."
Point of order, Madam Speaker?
Yes. What? I mean, I'm trying to get everybody in because I said four thirty we're voting, and we have, right after this, we're gonna have to, to vote on the confirmation.
Well, I think the delay is that since there is an objection, I'm thinking that there's no non-eight votes for this amendment, then it would, it would be unfortunate if we're going to proceed in this fashion and not truly recognize what is happening at the Department of Youth Affairs, and we're gonna once again leave that agency behind. It's, it's just an injustice, Madam Speaker. But call for the vote, there was an objection, and we just let the shifts flow where they may.
So on the motion, which I just read and I'll read again, the amendment by Senator Respecho is, "Those employed by the Department of Youth Affairs who are engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation work." That's the new amendment for subsection five. Or who, or who are assigned, okay. On that amendment, since there is an objection, all in favor, please raise your hand. Amendment carries. On the main motion, there being none, there, I understand, Senator, oh, you're not then, no, Senator Underwood, right, your, your question was addressed with, okay. All right, so Senator Uggan then to, to close. I'm sorry, is there, oh, yes, on the main motion, still on the main motion, I'm sorry.
I just need to understand, Madam Speaker, in previous discussion on the main motion, was there an objection to the main motion?
Yes, you did. You objected to that.
Uh, no, ma'am.
On the main?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, no, there wasn't any. I'm sorry, we're, that's why I'm saying we're back to the main motion.
Okay.
Now, which is just the entire bill that has been amended.
Right, and since I only had to, and if I may just speak very briefly, Madam Speaker, I raised the same issues that I raised when we were talking about the, the applicability to everybody in all these different agencies without having a chance to really understand whether any one within those agencies that are now included in this bill has, as, as substituted, we have not had a chance to really understand, are there any employees who would be exempt from hazardous pay just because, and again, I think this is an unfair type of way to proceed, to hear a bill on a, on a very specific and limited issue, and then to come out with a bill, a substitute bill, that is much broader and more general, without really having the ability to question it. So on that basis alone, Madam Speaker, I'm going to object.
Just to let you know that during COR, that question was brought up, and, but the vote, of course, was there to, for it to be placed on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am, and I just want to make sure that I offered an objection so that that becomes on record.
So, so then now, on the motion to send to the third reading file, Senator, are you raising your hand to speak on the main motion? Okay, I want to make sure then, okay. All right, you may then speak, Senator Torres.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to bring up for the body's attention as we deliberate whether to send this to the third reading file. In looking at the committee report, and I know that the, the committee chair spoke to the issue, but I just want to reiterate, it reads in section three of the committee report, findings and recommendations, that Bill Number 351 was initially introduced to authorize a ten percent hazardous pay to Customs and Quarantine Agency officers, who by virtue of the tasks they have to perform are exposed to, and I quote, "extreme physical hazards," unquote. It's been brought up, and I think this is a very valid reason why we should consider whether to advance this bill or not into the third reading file. In the findings and recommendations, it further states that the substitute bill is now more encompassing because it now addresses and proposes to give hazardous pay differential to five other agencies, which were not discussed at the public hearing or subsequent roundtable discussions. And in the findings and recommendations, it also points out that because the substitute bill is more encompassing, introduction of a new bill is deemed warranted. In listening to the discussions by all the previous speakers, it appears that hazardous pay is overly broad. And in the committee report, there was specific, there was some, some documentation submitted in one testimony that had instances of where hazardous pay is warranted. And then there were also references to types of situations where hazardous pay is warranted. When you have that kind of discussion, it's just so, it's, it's just so loosey-goosey in, in my estimate. And I know that agencies have specific categories of what hazardous pay is, but in, in this instance, I think that you're warrant, you're, you're advancing it to other agencies without really understanding the cause and effect, without understanding who specifically qualifies for it, because now you've opened it up. So it, it's hard to ascertain, although it's, it's been discussed that there being no fiscal impact, I, I highly doubt that, because there's no sense of what percentage of this broad category of employees who are now eligible for this would actually be eligible for a ten percent pay. But more importantly, I think we have to go back to the fact that five more agencies were added to the mix. That, that substantially changes and alters the bill as substituted, and the fact that the other agencies did not have a chance to offer testimony, and the committee really had no chance to understand in, in total and from an informed position what the true impact will be. I, I believe that, that it would not hurt to just go back, because I think that you're opening up a door that, a Pandora's box, perhaps, that you're not, we're not prepared. And of course, we're entertaining this right off of the heels of another bill that would have, that proposes to reduce our own salaries by thirty thousand dollars per annum. I mean, it just, there's no rhyme or reason to what we're doing as a body. On one end, we're saying, you know, we have to reduce this, and perhaps the principle is, is because it was an unfair and, an unfair raise, it didn't go through a public hearing, that had no input, and then on the other hand, we're, we're proposing to have a ten percent hazardous pay applied to not the one agency, but a whole string of agencies. So it, it, our logic does not follow where we were with the last Bill 201, and where we are now with Bill 351. It's just like two opposite trains of thought, and I'm just asking my colleagues, please, let's make sense of what we're doing, if we're trying to be fiscal, fiscally responsible, and, and take control and have a sense of why we're doing it, what the impact is, who exactly we're talking about, what are the parameters for hazardous pay? Let's be sensible. I mean, there's no haste. Some may argue there is a haste, but I think when you're exposing the government to further costs, then yes, we should take pause, because this was the very thing that got us criticized for our pay raise to begin with, that occurred in the Thirty-Second Guam Legislature. It's, it's the same train of thought. So I just say, my opinion is for us to take some pause, if this requires that the bill go back and that a public hearing be opened up so that all the agencies who are impacted by the substitute bill can then have a say, where fiscal notes can be requested as applicable, where some clarity as to qualifying employees for hazardous pay is, is spelt out, what's the harm? It's so much easier to take pause than to pedal backward, like, like we've done with the pay raise of the senatorial salaries and others. Pedaling backward just causes our whole community to go into turmoil and anguish, and for what? So please, colleagues, consider whether it's prudent to just not take haste with this and reexamine it. You know, it's not too long before the December session comes into play, and it isn't too late for a public hearing to be called again to readdress this, if that's the will of the body, the collective body. It's certainly my will, and I encourage everybody to be consistent, at least, in your rationale and in your thoughts about how to proceed with salaries, including hazardous pay differentials. It is, after all, part of the pay structure of employees, so let's just be consistent, folks, that's all I'm asking us. Otherwise, it's just too confusing for anybody that tries to follow what the heck we're trying to do and, and how it is that we go about making our decisions. Sisus Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. Does anybody else would like to speak on the main motion? There being none, Senator Uggan to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, and questions were being raised about the validity of this particular legislation being entertained on the floor and being comprehensive in nature, I was gonna raise a point of order, because the reality is, this legislation's already before this body for consideration, in its present format, it is on the agenda. But I did not, with all due respect to, to our colleagues, but you know, Madam Speaker, and with all due respect to the previous speaker, what's the rush? The term that was used, there's no haste. This piece of legislation, when the issue was brought up, that our law enforcement personnel, a good number of them in different government of Guam agencies, was exposed that in June, Department of Administration recognized that there was no legal authority to continue to pay hazard pay to these law enforcement personnel despite them being exposed to hazardous conditions. This legislation was introduced on July 11, within three weeks of when that issue was surfaced as a concern in the community by our law enforcement personnel. Madam Speaker, this piece of legislation was reported out on November 18, four months later, when in fact, our law enforcement personnel and community have waited for four, five months without being justly compensated based on the laws that previously, or the authorization that was previously in place. So if someone were to raise, "What's the rush? What's the harm?", our public safety law enforcement community out there has been carrying out their job responsibly and dutifully over the last five months without insisting on additional compensation. So we have a piece of legislation here, Madam Speaker, that we could have come in and, and entertain on a piecemeal basis, but rather than doing that, there was ongoing dialogue with government of Guam entities, representatives, about how can we ensure that this issue on hazardous pay for the government of Guam can be addressed comprehensively. And that's what we have before us. We have this piece of legislation that would address the law enforcement community as a whole, as a policy. There were a couple of issues, Madam Speaker, that were brought up. One is with regards to the list of, of positions. You look at the list of positions on page two, it says, "These hazardous duty positions shall be identified as follows." These positions are eligible, the individuals occupying these positions are eligible for hazardous pay. The additional safeguard and the protection of the tax dollars is ensuring that not only is the law enforcement administrator and the Department of Administration, it ensures that both of them collectively identify the application and the use of hazardous pay. You look at this, and it says, "The appointing authorities," and I need to read this again, Madam Speaker, because to me, it's clear. "The appointing authority of these agencies, which include Customs and Quarantine Agency, Guam International Airport Authority, Department of Agriculture, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Youth Affairs, Office of the Attorney General, and the Department of Administration, shall identify the direct exposure personnel, and," and a key phrase, "and upon exposure shall be entitled to the hazardous pay differential." "And upon exposure" does not mean that the entire eight hours a day that many of our law enforcement personnel work, that they're gonna receive hazardous pay unless, as an example, they are confined within the Department of Corrections compound, and they're confined to work in that arena, or, like was mentioned, the youth correction facilities, if in fact they're confined within that, that area where our youth are being directly serviced. Not necessarily the secretary that's in the next building, that individual is not exposed. That's where DOE and the administrator, the appointing authorities are gonna have to justify how this hazardous pay differential will be applied, and upon exposure. Those are critical perspectives, Madam Speaker, in regards to looking at this. Do we want to go piecemeal and just deal with one agency? Or do we address this collectively with the government of Guam? And that is exactly what Bill 351 provides. Some very legitimate issues were brought up, about the financial implication, but I have to remind everyone in this hallway that when our law enforcement personnel are exposed to hazardous conditions, then based on other existing legislation and laws, they should rightfully be compensated with hazardous pay. This would provide for DOE, as well as these agency heads, to be able to provide that information and ensure that the, our law enforcement community are properly compensated. You know, Madam Speaker, I was, over the course of the last fifteen minutes, I also received some additional requests for inclusion of other personnel. And I said at the beginning of my statement, I said, "This is reflective or inclusive of sworn law enforcement officers." There are some civilians that work in an environment, one in particular, Department of Corrections, civilians that work in an environment where in fact they deal with hazardous conditions on a regular basis. And one of my initial statements was, they, these agency heads would have to go before the Department of Labor, the Guam Occupational Safety and Health entity of Department of Labor, and justify that. Because there are a lot of, when, even in the testimony by Customs personnel, they wanted to include three or four additional positions that were civilian positions. And that's one of the reasons why, Madam Speaker, we confine it to law enforcement personnel, uniformed law enforcement personnel, so that in fact they would work in collaboration with Department of Administration and ensure that they prioritize the people's tax dollars, but in the same token, they recognize the hazardous conditions that our law enforcement personnel work. personnel work either on a daily basis or are exposed to intermittently, that they be compensated for that. So once again, Madam Speaker, I want to thank our colleagues seriously because it's been a good conversation. And yes, we can reflect on the process and what has transpired. But to me, our law enforcement community have been waiting for six months but continuing to work in these hazardous conditions because it is their duty and their responsibility. And I'm asking that they be given an allowance or a specialty pay that they were previously receiving on a regular basis prior to June of this year and allow DOA to work with these agency heads so that in fact, they can be identified. So Madam Speaker, with that being said, I ask you and I ask our colleagues for your consideration on this legislation. I hope that not only, perhaps in this case, I've learned from this process, but I think that the underlying concern here comes back to our public safety employees. Let's give them this allowance with that appropriate safeguard and let's ensure that they are compensated for the work in hazardous conditions upon exposure, should that be merited. So I ask you all, please, for your consideration. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
So on the motion then to send bill 351, there is an objection, so. All in favor to send 351 to the third reading, please raise your hand. No, it's to send it to the third reading file. Yes, for voting. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So the motion carries. We're going to now, ladies and gentlemen, vote on the confirmation. I've tried to get in touch with the rest of our colleagues, they're absent. But we're going to have to proceed. We're doing only one roll call and that's only for the judge. Senator?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Based on what you've just announced, I move that now as saying the House rolls, we proceed to the voting file to vote on the confirmations and then when we're done, to go back to the second reading file.
Thank you, Senator. That motion without any objections, so order. And this will be based on the ones that we do have a committee report on. On the nomination, senators, on the nomination of Terrence M. Brooks to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection, no, that's not in, I'm sorry, yet. On the nomination of John T. Calvo. No, you're right, yes, John. On the nomination of John T. Calvo to serve as a member of the Hegatnia Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners. All in favor, please raise your hand. How many do you have? Twelve, right? Okay, well, it's actually 12 votes and three absent. So the John T. Calvo is duly confirmed by this body. Three absent. One, two, three, absent. No, 12 votes, I said, I didn't say no. Votes, votes. On the nomination of William West L.G. Cassidy to serve as an Insurance Business Officer Representative, Guam Banking and Insurance Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Cassidy received 12 votes and three absent, and he is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Nadine T. Cepeda to serve as a licensed mental health counselor representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Ms. Nadine Cepeda received 12 votes, three absent, and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Carl V. Dominguez to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewer Authority Board of Commissioners. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Carl Dominguez received 12 votes and three absent, and he is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Elise McDonough Ariarty to serve as a judge of the Superior Court of Guam. Roll call. Senator, maybe before we do this, can you excuse the ones who are absent?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to excuse those who are absent and wouldn't be voting.
Thank you, Senator. That motion, objections, so order.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas excused. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, excused. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
The votes are 13 ayes. No, my dear. I'm only reading, okay, what was given to me. Okay, as corrected by the clerks, it is 12 ayes and three excused absents. Ms. Elise McDonough Ariarty is duly confirmed to be a judge of the Superior Court of Guam. On the nomination of Antoinette T. Johnson to serve as a real estate broker, member of the Real Estate Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Antoinette Johnson received 12 votes and three excused absents, she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Geraldine M. Leonguero to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Geraldine Leonguero received 12 votes and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Jolie Liston to serve as an archaeologist of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Jolie Liston received 12 votes and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Renee Lanetta to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Lanetta received 12 votes and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of David Lotz to serve as a planning representative of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Lotz received 12 votes and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Elisa U. Polino to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewer Authority Board of Commissioners. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Elisa Polino received 12 votes and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Jesse B. Rosario to serve as a member of the Guam Ocean and Fisheries Management Council. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Jesse Rosario received 12 votes and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Michael G. Tapashna to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Michael Tapashna received 12 votes and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Mark Benny Mandiola to serve as a parent of student enrolled within GDOE representative Guam Education Board. Please raise your hand. Mr. Mark Mandiola received 12 votes and is duly confirmed by this body. That completes then the voting file. We are back now to the second reading file. We will recess until tomorrow morning.